Southwest. So is evening. They won CIF, they won some other tournaments, they're like, um, they have a lot of stuff going on for the...
I now reconvene the regular meeting of Board of Education at 6:04 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The board met in closed session from 5:00 PM to 5:58 regarding student discipline matters, public employee appointment, procurement coordinator and assistant principal junior high school and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. The board appointed Lynette Varney as procurement coordinator, purchasing effective March 17th, 2023, by a vote of 5-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw voting yes. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. We're on to the pledge of allegiance and tonight I have a very special guest. Tilly, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Okay, um, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we are now to tonight's presentation. I had asked our Chino High School wrestling coaches to join us with some of their amazing athletes. Um, just to, before we join at the podium, just to give you a little background, I've been following their journey. Um, when I found out about, you know, everything that was going on at the city council meeting, Mark Lucio reached out to me and I got to watch firsthand, um, the success and the, the amazing love and the, just the heart put in by our coaches as well. Um, our, our boys won the Bash of the Beach and Esperanza tournaments. The girls won the Esperanza tournament. They're back-to-back league, league champions and they, um, they qualified 12 boys and seven girls to CIF and they qualified eight boys and three girls for the Masters meet. They went to state, they've just had amazing success and I think it starts with their coaches and their parents. So thank you for doing that for them and if you guys could meet me at the podium, athletes and the coaches. Before I hand out the certificates, for those that aren't here, I'll give them to you and bring them back to them. Um, but I would like to give you the opportunity to explain anything about the program, the athletes, anything that you would like for both of the coaches.
Oh, um, yeah, I mean, this is a, been very much a collective effort, uh, you know, with, with building a program in Chino. It's been, um, it's been, you know, a labor of love and it's something that we've grown really proud of. You know, with some of these kids, it's been great because, you know, I meet some of them later on in life, some of them I've known since they were younger. So it's really, uh, it's really been a, a really great thing for me as the coach and, you know, surrounding them with, you know, some other great coaches as well as, you know, these awesome parents that we have behind us, you know, really strong community, wrestling community that we have and, you know, seeing these kids flourish. You know, we're, we're competing with some of the best schools in the state, um, many of which have kids that are ranked, you know, in the state and in the country. So it's, it's really neat that, you know, within our, within our district that we've, we've started to build a, you know, a top-notch program and, you know, an environment where these kids can flourish and then also, you know, the gratitude of them being recognized for it because it's a niche sport, you know, I, I could, you know, I'm pretty sure that some of you may not even be clear about the rules of, of the sport. But, you know, we're giving them notoriety and I'm, I'm, you know, immensely grateful and then also proud of these kids here. Thank you.
Awesome. Now, we're, we're very proud of you guys and we're thankful for you guys and we have our support and we wish you much success. So, certificates and certificates, we have Coach Alex who... High School, so it's kind of neat to see, you know, roots growing up here and doing amazing things in our community.
Yep. None of our coaches are able to make it, except for the absent.
Okay, I'll just still read their names just so we can honor them and applaud for them. We have Coach Michael Semano. We have Coach Matthew Ledesma. We have Coach Erica Aguilera. We have Coach Zachary Schoonover. We have Coach Dylan Moreno. Coach Artie Carranza. Okay, and we have Tilly, uh, Tilly, last name?
Kekup.
Kekup. We have Tilly Kekup. We have Julia Soria. And we have Michael Vassal.
Viselli.
Viselli. Last but not least, we have Jonathan Madera. Keep it up. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, guys. Oh, you guys want a picture?
Sonia. Can you really quickly state the process of going from CIF to Masters? Because that's, you know, the process of going from CIF to Masters, because that is pretty...
Yes, um, there's a, is it, everything is qualified as you move up in tiers. So we go from, uh, league finals, so everyone in your league will be bracketed together. Then the top three from your league move on to CIF. Um, and then from there, you have to place top five for the boys and top eight for the girls. And then you move on to Masters and that will put you in the southern section, which is about 500 schools. And then from there, you progress if you're in a two-person, uh, or a two-60 person bracket. Uh, for the boys, it's top five go. Um, and then for the girls, it's top four. So, um, once you move on, you advance into state. So we had three boys make it this year. We had, we had three girls and then another additional boy make it to the, they call the blood rounds, for lack of a better term. So had they won, they would have moved on to state. So it's, it's quite an accomplishment and it's quite a feat. Unlike a lot of states where they have one A, two A, three A, different divisions of state. In wrestling, you crown the, there's only one division. So there's only one true state champion. Uh, so that's what makes it really challenging in California with the number of schools that we have here. So, yeah.
That, that would also mean that we're talking about Olympians, though?
Yeah, there's, there's been, there's been a number of Olympians making it out of California. Um, you know, in recent, uh, history, we had Jake Barner, uh, from Bakersfield High School, who was the delivery champion probably about 16 years ago, I think now at this point. So, uh, but yeah, it's, it's, it's tough. It's very tough. Thank you.
Well, awesome. Thank you for coming and thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're on to comments from our student representative, Ms. King. Sorry, Ms. King, Ms. King.
No, it's okay. Um, good evening, Board President Shaw, members of the board and distinguished guests. I hope everyone has had a great week. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the wrestling team. It's awesome I get to attend school with you guys. And, um, although I won't be able to be there next year, I hope Mr. Angulo takes the team again. Uh, it's really awesome. They have a great energy that some other sports don't really get to bring, being at wrestling, uh, like the matches, stuff like that. Uh, it's really nice to see there really are like a, a team and stuff like that and I hope other, uh, sports can follow them next year. Uh, a few students, uh, from Chino High School this week, or I believe it was yesterday, got to attend the San Bernardino County Superintendent's Student Advisory Castle where they collaborated with other schools in the county to present issues that schools experience, uh, in the county. And the, um, for those of you who don't know, I am a part of Chino High School's water polo and swim team. Overall, I've heard many concerns about Ayala, their pool, their facilities needing updates, things like that. And I thought that I would bring attention to the Chino High School and Don Lugo pools. Our pools, um, the pool itself, it's, it works great. Obviously, it's a pool, you swim in it. But in terms of, um, like bathrooms, things like that, um, at Chino, we have morning practice and we only have, uh, two one-person bathrooms. It's very hard to use when we have, um, 30 to 40 girls in our team and we're all trying to change within, even when we get out 30 to 40 minutes early, we're still running late to classes and things like that. And it's hard because our coaches can't make it after school. So having that morning practice is really needed. And having two bathrooms really doesn't cut it. Obviously, we can't share a bathroom with the guys and again, it's a one-person, um, bathroom. And then we also only have, um, one outdoor shower and not everyone wants to show up to school, so I'm unlike Corinne, looking like a mess. So obviously you want to rinse off a little bit. So having the one outdoor shower also, um, is a little difficult. And then at Don Lugo, again, they also have just the two, um, one-person bathrooms and then they have, I believe, two outdoor showers. But still, it's only, it's only two outdoor showers. Um, aquatics programs across the district, um, they're growing, they're going, they're doing really well. They've made it to CIF, they won league champions and stuff like that in the past few years. We're doing really well. And, um, we need, we need the support, we need our facilities to back our others, um, other sports. At Chino High School, we just got almost all of our stuff redone. We got our track redone, things like that. And we really need aquatics to get the same thing. Um, and we really just need the district's support. Uh, if you guys need to, if you guys want to come down, look at the pool, anything like that, um, I'm there every, almost every day. So if you guys want to come see it, you guys can. Uh, same with Don Lugo. I know some kids that are on the team over there. So if you guys want to go down and look at it, things like that, um, I'd be happy to, to show you guys. Besides that, I don't have much. I just want to thank everyone. I hope everyone enjoys their weekend in St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Ms. King. Next up are comments from the employee representatives. We have Brenda Walker from ACT. Dani Hernandez from CSCA.
Good evening, President Shaw, Superintendent Enfield, board members, cabinet and community. Um, I wanted to just extend that congratulations to Chino High School's wrestling team on the CIF championship. What a great accomplishment and how you mentioned it's also the parents and seeing them getting their pictures taken in with the smiles. It's very much a great accomplishment. Um, I wanted to share with the board and the community that Chino 102 will be holding a car show on May 13th here at the district office. Board members, cabinet, staff and community are all invited to attend. Chino 102 is raising money for membership, membership and their dependent scholarships. So again, that's May 13th here at the district office, I believe over there on the, by the solar panels. Lately, I've been getting a lot of calls and questions about classes, classified staff's exact job duties. I refer them to their job description of each respective classification. It seems as of late, there's been a question of a duty or the fact that maybe nobody wants to do it. Give it to classified staff. Clerical staff, nutrition, custodial, all being asked to provide services in addition to what they already have to do. Opening up a few more classrooms, a program, custodial will clean it, start a new program, clerical staff will enroll. Well, enrollment is down at some school sites as a justification sometimes. Regardless of how many students are on campus, if a, if a room or a bathroom is utilized by a few students or a classroom full, they need to be cleaned. Sometimes some of our staff seems to be utilized as free agents, being sent anywhere based on the classification. Doing an IEP, departments, either one of them. As a district, we need to do better. Chino Valley is competing with other school districts in the, in the area, in the same area for the same workforce. Whether it be wages, benefits or other unique ways, we need to do better. Based on the age group of our classified staff and years of service at CVUSD, many will retire within the next five or so years. I've been trying to keep track of the vacancies that we have, but those numbers keep on growing. On our agenda today, there is an increase in a contract from 150,000 to 400,000 to provide services to our students in our special needs department, which I'm pretty sure we all want that. But these are basically for positions that are unfielded. In years past, when a position was flown, we would have no shortage of applicants. Now we count ourselves fortunate if we have 10 applicants for each position. Out of those 10, six maybe show up for, to take the test, maybe two or three pass. And if a department and our site does end up scheduling an interview, we hope one person shows up to that interview. I share that because that's how it happened numerous times where we have scheduled interviews with maybe three or four applicants. Nobody shows or one shows. We have had positions open since October. We have flown it a few times around the district, a few different positions since October. It seems like the goal line is being moved as the game's being played to some of these employees. It has gotten to the point where some of our CVUSD staff has gone to neighboring districts and they are beginning to actively recruit some of our CVUSD members to go there. We need to do better. I say we because classified staff is continually sharing with me that they don't feel appreciated in the work that they are asked to do above what they're already being paid to do. I don't have some big plan or some fix-all. I'm simply sharing with you what classified shares with me every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dani. Barbara Bearden from CHAM.
Good evening, President Shaw, school board members, Dr. Enfield, cabinet and Chino Valley community. As we continue to experience an unusually rainy season, I would like to commend our maintenance team for their tireless work in taking care of our school, schools and district facilities. Just today, my team at Eagle Canyon had to put in an emergency work order, thanks to the rain, and our team responded right away. We appreciate you. Parents, this is a reminder that chronic absenteeism is affecting many of our schools. Please ensure that illness is the only reason your child is absent. When your child is not in school, they are not receiving important instruction. Finally, parents, we are approaching the end of the school year. I know it's hard to believe, but many of our end-of-year traditions are already taking place. We hope that you can enjoy these moments with your children and make some fun memories. As a reminder, spring break, I'm always going to focus on those times off for our, our community. As a reminder, spring break is March 27th through the 31st. We hope that you, um, have an opportunity to enjoy time off with your family and friends. Thank you for your time and I hope you all have a wonderful weekend.
Awesome. Thank you. We are now, now at comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items? Speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on the agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the board typically does not respond to comments during that time on the agenda as it's reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members must, may respond during board comments at the end. Mr. Cruz, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the board, limit remarks to new points, begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary. Please refrain from comments while speakers are at the podium. And also please note the Board Policy 1312-1 outlines a procedure for anyone who wishes to file complaint against a district employee.
The first speaker is Gloria Sicarelli, followed by Anne Malone, followed by Misty.
Hello, board. I want to talk to you today about Black History Month. As it relates to, as it relates to this district, all of my siblings and I have a story of being called the N-word, of being made fun of for our hair or of being body shamed for proportions that are naturally different. Whenever my parents would complain if they weren't outright blown off, they were told things like, "It's just hair" or "How are we supposed to know it was a problem?" He was laughing. Fast forward to today and all of these things are still happening to my sons in one form or another. At least when I was a kid, I had at least one month where even when they did the safe topics and persons related to black history, I would learn something new every year. However, as the years have gone by, the Black History Month curriculum has become more and more sparse to the point of its non-existence today. A 2016 New York Times article written by Perul Sagal defines this phenomenon known as erasure as the collective indifference that renders certain people and groups invisible. He goes on to say that erasure is a blunt word for a blunt process. It goes beyond simplistic discussions of quotas to ask, whose stories are taught and told? Whose suffering is recognized? Who's dead or mourned? I understand, this district is primarily non-black. As a black woman, I understand the concept of advocating for your culture and the people in it and wanting to teach your children their rich history. However, what I do not understand is failing to include black history in this curriculum. I mean, is there even a black, a curriculum for Black History Month? For that matter, are faculty and staff educated on diversity and inclusion in this district? If so, is that class and its curriculum taught by someone in one of the district's marginalized groups that do not have an affiliation with someone in the clergy, district or on the board? As a parent, how am I supposed to see the district as anything but indifferent to the blackness of my kids? The different people, groups and their cultures should have a special place in the curriculum and be celebrated accordingly and individually as they are individual and unique. They should not be completely erased or wrapped up in one giant class meant to be a dumpster for all minority studies. I don't mean for this to be nothing but an indictment of the district or a problem without a solution. Also, these committees, uh, I want to close this by saying that we are not asking for black culture and studies to be at the top. We're just asking for it not to be erased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Malone, followed by Misty.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention an assembly bill that was introduced a few weeks ago in our legislature. It's Assembly Bill 1314. It would require parents to be notified by school personnel if their child is identifying while they're at school as a gender that doesn't align with the student's official records or their birth certificate. So I would just like to request that the, uh, board put it on their agenda for consideration of support. The bill, uh, reads that existing law provides that parents and guardians of children enrolled in the public schools have the right and should have the opportunity as mutually supportive and respective, respectful partners in the education of their children within the school, public schools, to be informed by the school and to participate in the education of their children as specified to include, among other things, having access to the rec, school records of their child. Existing law authorizes a minor who is 12 years old or older to consent to mental health treatment or counseling services, notwithstanding any provision of the law to the contrary, if in the opinion of the attending professional person, the minor is mature enough to participate intelligently in those services or to outpatient mental health treatment or counseling services if the foregoing is true and the minor would present a danger of serious physical or mental harm to self or to others without the mental health treatment or counseling to residential, uh, shelter services or is alleged, or is the alleged victim of incest or child abuse. Is this law requires the mental health treatment or counseling of a minor authorized by these provisions to include involvement of the minor's parents or guardians unless, in the opinion of the professional person who is treating or counseling the minor, the involvement would be inappropriate. This bill would, notwithstanding the consent provisions described above, provide that a parent or guardian has the right to be notified in writing within three days from the date any teacher, counselor or employee of the school becomes aware that the pupil is identifying at school as a gender that does not align with the child's sex on their birth certificate, other official record or sex assigned at birth using sex segregated school programs and activities, including, uh, athletic teams and, or competitions or using facilities that do not align with the child's sex on their birth certificate, other official records or sex assigned at birth. The bill would state legislate, the legis, the bill would state legislative intent related to these provisions by imposing additional duties on the school officials, the bill would impose a state mandated local program. And it goes on talking about some of the state appropriations. So anyhow, we'd like you to consider putting it on.
The final speaker is Misty. Second to the final.
Good evening, board. Um, I gave this speech to the, uh, at the city council meeting and I'm going to give it again here. I am here as a concerned parent, representing many other concerned parents and students regarding the lack of safety and support from law enforcement at Chino Hills High School and Towns and Junior High. For those that aren't aware, for over a year, more than over a year, um, the amount of violence and behavioral problems at these schools has increased and most recently, it's gotten even worse. Now the students are finding their way off campus to fight in order to avoid district disciplinary action. Let me add, from recent video footage of these fights, they are horrendous and extremely brutal. My first concern is what I and many others see is a lack of proper law enforcement or SRO involvement. There should have been and should always be a zero tolerance policy for violent behavior. And my understanding is that the SRO was notified of one of these fights and did nothing. My second concern is regarding Deputy Negron. A parent tried to reach out to him in person at the Chino Hills Police Department and multiple times by phone this past summer. Till this day, as he, um, he has still not returned the phone calls. In fact, many parents say the same, no response. Deputy Negron seems to lack a sense of urgency or concern with the safety of our students. So why is he an SRO? My third concern is why it took the same parent who has been trying to connect with Deputy Negron to watch out, to reach out to the city council member and the district liaison, Mr. Art Bennett, to get the sheriff's department to act on the most recent violence. Mr. Bennett then reached out to city manager, Mr. Montgomery and thereafter Chief Goodell. Mr. Bennett then reached out to City Manager, Mr. Montgomery, and thereafter Chief Goodell. You can't possibly tell me that the department nor the SROs had no indication of these fights because it's been made clear they showed up to the scene after the fights were over. They chose not to follow up until a parent, who doesn't even have a child at the school, reached out to Mr. Bennett. My final concern is with the current security on campus. Many parents and students have complained about witnessing security sitting around on their phones, chit-chatting. While I understand this is acceptable at times, it's happening far too often. It doesn't make me feel safe if the security is on their phone during school. I would like to also say, as it's been said before, we need to have parents strategizing with schools on how to provide peer-building programs such as a buddy program, because I think this could be a good opportunity to help these students think outside of themselves and become better people. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Julissa.
Good evening. My name's Julissa, and I'm here as a concerned parent. I'm happy to share I don't have any direct issues or contacts in regards to my children, but I've raised my children here since tiny tots through Chino Hills, different resources that we have. So I love this neighborhood, and I am very concerned as a parent in regards to some of the things that I have witnessed myself. First of all, I'd like to address a lack of responsiveness in addressing concerns when I myself have gone to Chino Hills High School to relay concerns, to be dismissed. Secondly, I'd like to bring exposure to note that allowing the situations to escalate to the point where we're sending law enforcement to families and having children be arrested and having families have notifications that they too are being cited is a concern. This is not the type of community that we should be involved with. We should be the type of community that cares for one another and looks for the best interest of each other. When we resort to law enforcement at the very last resort, that's shame on us. Shame on you as leaders, shame on our district as leaders. So I would like for us to really think about what systems we have in place to ensure safety, security, to ensure leased resources of how we are going to address this, rather than go to the extreme measures where now we're impacting kids where they have no recourse. Once they have a criminal record, we have kids who are considering military. Guess what? Military doesn't take kids with criminal records. You're doing a disservice to our community by resorting to the very last resort. I also want to bring to light that creating a need for the kids to fend for themselves has increased the situation to the point where it's at. Kids went to their school officials, particularly at the high school, to report that there were some concerns. Kids went and shared posts and Instagrams to be dismissed and be told, "We're handling it, you don't need to worry about it." And then have situations escalate where I myself, as I'm driving up to pick up my kids, there's a big brawl in front of Wendy's in front of the street with parents involved, kids involved. Not necessary. It should have never escalated to that point. If it was your child, you'd be standing right here next to me. So I really demand that this be looked at it from a bigger, grander scale. What we're doing is creating animosity amongst families. Why? Because you've now cited families. You've now caused a discord between families in this community, and it's unjust and it's unfair. Lastly, a lack of documentation from school leadership when parents request meetings and when we've had meetings. There's no documentation to say, "We brought this to your attention." So as parents are formalizing complaints, there's no recourse to say, "Parents went and addressed the situation." So I'm very disappointed at that fact.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes and deletions are on the agenda. Human Resources, Item three E one, Certified Classified Personnel Items. Page eighty-three, under Release of Employee Without Prejudice. Delete Employee two nine zero one seven, effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And under Resignation, add the name Danielle Seibert, Paraprofessional two, Marshall Elementary School, effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. No further changes or deletions.
Thank you, Pat. We're now on to action items. The first item is Item two A one, twenty-two dash twenty-three, Second Interim Financial Report. Recommend that the Board of Education approve the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three Second Interim Financial Report and authorize the President of the Board of Education and the Superintendent to sign the Positive Certification of Financial Condition for the current and two subsequent fiscal years. Pat, are there any speakers?
There are none.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments, questions, or discussions? Monroe, did you push your light?
No.
Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Preferential?
Yes.
The motion passes with the vote of five to zero, and preferential voting yes. The next item is Item two B one, Transportation Plan. Recommend that the Board of Education approve the transportation plan. Pat, are there any speakers?
There are none.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second? Is there any comments, questions, or discussions? We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Preferential?
Yes.
The motion passes with the vote of five to zero. With preferential voting yes, that concludes the action items. We're now at consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items?
There are none.
Board members, do you have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz?
No polls.
Mr. Monroe?
No polls.
Mr. Nah?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls? For the remainder of the, for, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did we get a motion? I thought we didn't end the beginning. Okay, can I have a motion? Sorry.
So moved.
Motion by Cruz, second?
Second.
By Nah. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Preferential? The motion passes with the vote of five to zero, with preferential voting yes. We're now at communications. We have Mr. Bridge.
Thank you, President Shaw. Just a couple of quick comments. First, Happy Saint Patrick's Day tomorrow. I attended the multicultural fair, excuse me, at Wickman Elementary on March third. Just a wonderful event, very well attended. Congratulations to Principal Christine Wilson and staff, but it was so popular that those of us that got there a few minutes late had to park a couple blocks away. So it was just an outstanding evening. Also attended the Chino High Stepping Up Program. I want to thank the SROptimists for putting on that program last Saturday. Sunday, I was one of the board members that, in fact, all of us, that went to Chino High for the WASC Visiting Committee Reception and Meeting with the Board and Administration. They were very impressed with what they saw at the school. They were very impressed that all five of us showed up at that meeting and reception on Sunday afternoon. Tuesday, I was at the Chino High again for the dedication of the new gym named for Mark Hargrove. Very, very nice event, and it was nice to see the plaque and the way the foyer was set up with his name and recognition. Last night, I attended the Chino Hills Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, where it was announced that the city council approved the teen advisory board that I mentioned at our meeting last month. This is a wonderful opportunity for our Chino Hills secondary students to participate in our local government, and I fully support this, and I see Mr. Bennett is there. Thank you for passing that. While I can't speak officially for the entire board, I would hope that the rest of my colleagues would support that as well, and look forward to having the information going out to the school sites to get the applications and get that underway. But thank you again for doing that. Mrs. Bairdner mentioned that spring break is March twenty-seventh through the thirty-first. We're returning the classes on Monday, April third. I wanted to mention this for a particular reason. This whole week that we're back in school, the week of April third, in certain part of our religious community is an important, important week, including mine. The district will be off on Good Friday, April seventh. My church, and I won't mention which one, but I'll give you a historical reference. You can look up the Reformation and the date, October thirty-first, fifteen seventeen. Also has a church service on Thursday night, April sixth, at seven o'clock. So I wanted to let you know that I will be here at closed session on April sixth, but I'll be leaving at six o'clock to attend that. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Nah?
Yes. I hear you, our parents, especially from Chino Hills High School, attendance area in Townsend. It has come up to be my greatest, one of our greatest concern over the last few years. And I'd like to ask Dr. Anfield to have our Risk Management and Security Director, Department Head, I think it's it, Wiley. Please have him sent there and to assess the problem and come up with a viable solution.
He's already working on that.
Yeah, to make sure that our students are being safe, and also our staffs and our parents. And if, if he's already working on it, we want to maybe get additional input from our staffs there and also from the parent group to, to get additional informations and ideas, because we want to make our schools the most safest schools possible in California, and that's how we're going to grow in education. We need to have a safe learning place, secure first. So I agree with our parents a hundred percent, and we must take this very seriously. So thank you, parents, for coming to our meeting tonight and to address this concern. It's very important. And I have heard, you know, other things about the population on that campus too, and I think it has been changing. The things are being changed, and it's not due to what we are doing, not our parents, but it's just the pandemics, just economy, it's different situations. So we need to make sure that, we need to be flexible and, and adopt and implement new system of thoughts and new ideals to, to protect our students and our staff members. And, yes, my children also went to Chino Hills High School, and we need to bring that back in order by working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nah.
And, I got a couple more things. I, yes, we had swimming pool concerns. Now I hear about Chino High School, yeah, it might be more work for our poor Greg, but I'd like to ask our Superintendent to send our staffs to assess the problem at Chino High School and also Don Lugo High School in regards to swimming pool facility situations and their bathrooms.
Yeah, we'll look into that, but the swimming pool area is being modernized. Greg, when's that project coming up?
We're currently waiting for DSA approval on the Chino High Pool. We expect it anytime soon, and then hopefully that project will get started this summer for full modernization of the swimming pool facility, and then Don Lugo's will be next, next year for the same kind of work.
And we want to make sure that we get the inputs from the, their students and their coaches and all the staffs when we do any modernization, because they're the people that were using those facilities. Thank you. And also, I'd like to talk about stepping up. Yes, we had a great, successful event at Chino High School. We had, I believe, two hundred sixty students showed up and with all the parents. So thank you all for participation, and I also like to thank Ms. Sonia Shaw for making great remarks. She was brief, she was just top to the point and very intellectual, and really, I had good response from, especially with the students, our girls, about how they need to overcome a fear. And it was a great remark, and I'd just like to thank Ms. Sonia Shaw for her leadership and for that event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nah. Mr. Cruz?
Her name is Julissia.
Julissia?
Julissa?
Julissia. You know, President Shaw, she's. Julissa.
Julissa.
She is correct, to the point that it's not good to be reactive, that we have to, we have to be proactive. Oh, we have to be proactive, like you said. As far as it went, it should have never happened that way.
Correct.
I do understand that, and at the same time, I have to feel, I have to apologize that these things do happen. So I apologize for those situations that do happen, but, but I, we're making a difference. We're being proactive now, making a difference where safety manners a whole lot with our children, and especially what you mentioned about military. Eventually, you mentioned about military. I'm thinking you're talking about your son, huh? You're talking about?
No, I'm talking about myself, sir. I'm a ten-year retired military officer.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just empathizing for you. Yes.
I'm talking about myself as a ten-year retired military officer.
Okay. No, no, I do, I do understand what you're saying. Thank you.
I wouldn't have the opportunity to get away from me. I'm speaking about all the children. Okay, we have to reserve this, this time for the, I'm sorry, we have to. I know.
I know, but.
I apologize.
No, I apologize.
No problem.
But no.
I understand, trust me.
Thank you. I do, I do understand where you're coming from, so thank you, thank you. And then also, Dr. Anfield, with Assembly one three one four, I would like that to be a resolution, so we'll talk about that in the near future as well. For Mark Hargrove, I also attended the Stepping Up Program too, and that was a very nice event for children transitioning from elementary to middle school. So it's pretty good. And the WASC, like Dr., Mr. Bridge stated, was really fantastic. All of us were present, and that's pretty rare for WASC events, so I'm really glad. Memorial, Mark Hargrove's Gymnasium. It's a beautiful plaque that they presented at Chino High School, and it states, "Mark Hargrove was a lifelong Chino resident who graduated from school in nineteen eighty-two. After graduation, he enlisted in the United States Air Force, serving his country for four years, and he then went on to serve the State of California as a correction officer for thirty years. Upon retirement, he continued his life of service by serving on the Chino Planning Commission, and in two thousand and eighteen, he was elected to Chino City Council. In all his years of service, he always supported Chino High School, serving as sports booster president and founding the Boys Basketball Booster Club. While he had many roles, his favorite role was being a beloved husband, father, and grandfather." So I mean, that was really amazing what he did for him. And they had scripture, Math twenty-five, twenty-one, "Well done, good and faithful servant." So it was, it was a beautiful ceremony that they had. And I'd like to share this book. This book, Dr. Anfield, will go to Rhodes. "The Wonderful Life of Things You Will Be." So when you were too small to tell me hello, I knew you were someone I wanted to know. For all your tinies could disguise a heart so enormous and wild and wise." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you. I just want to echo.
I just want to echo some of the words of the other board members. Wickman multicultural event was fantastic. Cultures around the world were represented, and it was a packed house. So a great job with, with that, Wickman. Also attended the Seroptimists and the WASC, which those involved, I want to thank them for that. The Seroptimist Stepping Up Program is sixth graders going into junior high school. So it's geared towards sixth grade girls and preparing them for what's to come and giving them an introduction of going into junior high. So it's a very worthwhile program, and a lot of work goes into that. I want to echo Mr. Bridge's comments on the Teen Advisory Board and thank Chino Hills Council for approving that. Students that are in Chino Hills, please look for that. That will be seventh grade on up to seniors. So a wide span of ages and grades to really get involved in your community and your local government. I would encourage all the students to look at that and the opportunities that it provides, and I look forward to that, that taking place in Chino Hills. I had an opportunity to visit several campuses the last, since the last meeting. I visited Boys Republic, spent some time with Mr. Hampton up there. It was great to see, I haven't, I haven't been to Boys Republic in a while and see what's going on there. Uniquely, I had an opportunity while I was there, they had a student graduate, which is phenomenal. Not only graduated, but he obtained a Blue Book, which there's 11 criteria that has to be met. And it's wonderful to see a young man take advantage of opportunity to change things around and actually hold on to that and, and do well. So I was very, very happy to experience that, that day. I want to thank E.J. Marshall, Mrs. Verdugo, for showing me around her campus and allowing me to visit with her staff there. Chino Hills High School, Dr. B, same, showing me around and looking at specifically things that we need to look at and change going forward. And I know there's a lot of concerns in the communities, but I will tell you that as a board, we're already moving forward with different measures and things, and I look forward in the future of the things that come out of this to make it a better place. I had an opportunity actually to attend a boosters meeting at Don Lugo, and we've heard the last couple of weeks, a lot of boosters coming in and, and asking for help, whether it's banned boosters or, that seems to be here. But I do want to give a plug to these booster programs. There are so many great extracurricular activities that we do in our district, and it is impossible as a district to fund them all. The booster program and these parent volunteers to raise funds and help our students with the, with the funds that they raise really help our students enjoy everything that they do and get far and above what we can provide. So if you get an opportunity to support a local boosters program or fundraiser, please take advantage of that. If you're not involved in it, look at it and getting involved. They need all the help that they can get. It's a hard job to go out there and fundraise, so please just consider that. I got to visit Lytle Elementary with Mr. Durkin. It was great, kind of reuniting with him. I worked with him years ago when he was at Don Lugo, and I was a school resource officer, so it was kind of neat seeing him as the principal up there and having a conversation of things. As well, earlier today, I went up to Oak Ridge with Mr. Reese and had a opportunity to watch, if those of you may have heard Odyssey of the Mind. So while I was there, they had their fourth and fifth graders actually performing and practicing their Odyssey of the Mind for the, for the competition that's coming up April 1st. So I had an opportunity to actually see that today, and the amount of work and creativity that goes in that. I just want to thank those fourth and fifth graders for their commitment and their time and representing their school, their teachers, their grade level in such a manner. Everything that they did, from the costumes to the props the students did, to writing the script, it's a phenomenal thing. And for those of you that don't know the Odyssey of the Mind, it's a program that's coming back. So if you have elementary kid, elementary age kids, please look into that. It's, it is a great program that gets these kids to create and solve problems, whether it's a mechanical problem or drama problem, there are certain categories that they can choose from. But I want to thank them for their commitment and, and all the, all staff for allowing me to come visit and see our campuses and look how we're going forward. So I'm excited going in and the things that we have coming, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, John. Superintendent, Dr. Enfield?
All right. Today, I'm happy to announce that we are opening our senior scholarship application. So any of our seniors who's interested in a scholarship and the application, they can go on our website, and you'll see it there. It's on the front of our website. And then on Monday, March 20th, is our annual Julie Gobin Memorial Hit the Greens for Scholarship, and that's the event that helps support our senior scholarships. So I want to thank Sally and Tim Adams for the support they put it on, and they do a fantastic job. So want to, want to thank them and thank everybody that's participating in that scholarship. It raises a lot of money for our seniors every year. So with that, that's all my comments.
Thank you. I first want to thank all of our speakers for coming out. I will say, the, all the fights that have been occurring, it's something that has been on my mind and heart, and solutions are running through my head and just brainstorming. But I was able to get out to Chino Hills High. I even took John with me one of the days, and even walking during lunch, talking to security, talking to Dr. B, parents, talking to parents, talking to students, I mean, you name it, staff. It's not going unnoticed, and it's not going untreated. I do have to say that, that today I heard a couple of parents' conversations, and we do need to have parental involvement and parental engagement, and we need, we need to be able to do better to reach out to those. I do agree with that. That's been a thing that, for a long time. Parental involvement has screamed tonight on, on a few things, and that's something where I will put effort into working harder and making sure that, you know, we set the expectations that parents need to be involved. They need to be notified. We need to have some kind of communication so we can work together. We're partners, we're not enemies, and the kids are, are gold. Their, their success is our goal together. So that will be a priority, but I will let you know, it is not going untreated. I want to thank, you know, the city of Chino Hills and, and Mr. Bennett for stepping up and just our security, our staff. We even have bus drivers that, which you guys know, there's a bus driver shortage, and they're stepping up into substitute positions to fill for security right now. We're getting the extra security on there. We've been looking at different things to be able to solve it long term. These are the things that we're focusing on as a team, and I, and I want to remind you guys, we are a team. Parents, the staff, the school sites, the security, bus drivers, we're a team, and I want to thank all of them for their hard work. I mean, you, you go to the sites and you do see people giving their blood, sweat, and tears, and they need help, and we need to be able just to work together and not look at each other like obstacles. We need to just link arms and get that done. You have my full support and, and my effort. It's not, I've, I even told Dr. B, "You might see me here at least three times a week doing lunch duty too." I have no problem doing that. I did it one of the days. I think it's, it's actually kind of fun. But, you know, we will get that done together. I think together is where we, we need to focus on that. Also, with two bills, it looks like legislative up there in Sacramento are busy trying to make bills that involve students and education. I am a strong believer that our school district has a strong voice, not just parents. We have to link arms with them, and AB 1314, Cruz said he wanted to bring a resolution forward, and I'm in full support of that. But I'm also looking at, me and a city council member are trying to schedule a meeting with one of our assemblymen to go over the opposition of the HPV vaccine to go to school, AB 659. And Dr. Enfield, I know we spoke about this, but I would like to bring a resolution forward to that, but I don't like to just bring resolutions without, without some kind of teeth into it. I want to do the work with it too. So you will have my full promise to engage with our, our assemblymen and our senators to be able to voice our concern, but I'm hoping that we can bring those two resolutions and start voicing our concerns for our students there in Sacramento and trying to give back local control because we know our students best and we know it's not a one size fits all for all schools. So you guys do have my support on that. I want to say the Step It Up Program, that was my first time going, and the work put into that from our staff here to the Seroptimists is, it's, it's a lot, but it was a beautiful event. I actually, we even got to meet the warden at the women's Chino prison, and she was one of my favorites. If you ever get to meet her, she's pretty awesome. But yeah, they did a lot of good work, and I want to mention our janitor there over at Chino High. She was amazing because there was, this is a new, it was a new venue for that, that event. It's usually at another high school, and the flag, everything from the flag to extra chairs to this, that. She was running with no questions, and she just got it done, and we appreciate everything that she did for them. I saw it firsthand, and, and I, I love the dedication and just the hard work and the caring that she put forth for that. I attended the WASC in Chino High. That's my second WASC that I attended, and it's kind of pretty cool when you see the whole team show up, and, and our cabinet got, our superintendent, our cabinet, our board got compliments, you know, from, they go to these things all the time, and they don't see as much support in these meetings, so that was kind of neat to show them that we are a team and we're there together and just to, to keep moving forward with that. And, and it was kind of cool to see Chino, you know, being proud and showing off their school. I got to attend the, the naming of the Mark Hargrove Gym, and it was a beautiful event. If you get a chance, go look at the plaque and the name up there. It's beautiful, but I don't know if it was recorded, but if you can watch it, just hearing the families and the friends talk about him, it was pretty cool to see his involvement into our schools and for our students. The Wickmans multicultural event, I'm going to try to make this short, but I can't wait for next year, and I'm going to take the whole family with me. I had, I had company waiting, and I accidentally made them wait longer because John and I couldn't get out of there because it was just so neat. If you guys have a chance to attend that next year, I'm not trying to overflow Wickman, but man, get out there. It is, it is rad. You have food, you have different artifacts, costumes, everything you could think of from all different cultures. It was pretty amazing, and a lot of hard work goes in from parents and staff and the community, and that, I just loved attending that, and I hope that we have more around at different schools. I also want to thank Oak Ridge, Townsend, Glenmead, Woodcrest, Liberty, Dickey, Hidden Trails, Country Springs, and Canyon Hills for opening your, your schools, your heart, your home to us. Dr. Enfield and I were able to visit those. School site visits are fun, so I can't wait to do more. And one thing before I end this, can you please let us know if there's something that we don't see? Keep in communication with us. We'll do our best to get back to you or have somebody get back to you. And also, if you see somebody doing something amazing, we would love to honor them, so please reach out to me and let me know. And with that, I want to thank you.